I'm scheduled for people to ask questions tonight after the update of superintendent's section on the agenda, thinking that that was going to be a hot topic. But I don't, I don't know that we're going to have a lot of people because we didn't have a lot of people email. Okay, so now that I'm done, I still see no public comment and I think I'm still good to go. So moving forward, can we review our norms?
I will.
Okay, thanks Diane.
Focus on student outcomes, be open-minded, respect each other, value different viewpoints, be responsible to our community, make decisions based on data and facts, listen to each other, be reflective, run meetings that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent, and follow Robert's rules.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And next, can I get a recommendation to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
Thank you, Michael. Can I guess?
Yeah.
Diane?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Diane?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, and I, 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 I. Motion passes. All right, we're getting into the nitty-gritty. Are you ready Randy?
I am.
Okay, it's all yours.
Okay, so the first agenda item is to approve the mandatory electronic communications between employees and student policy. So this is required by the, by the state and you've got a copy of the policy in your agenda packet.
So do you want comments now or something?
I think we need to have a motion on the floor and then we will address.
Fine.
I'll move to adopt the policy.
Thank you Cory. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Diane. Any discussion?
I just have.
Go ahead Diane.
Okay, clarity and maybe just a quick, I've read it, but if you look at Roman numeral two, section A, and then it says examples of are not limited to image sharing and communication between means of internets, of an internet site, social media, and social networking Can I just have some clarity on that? Like what is it that you're telling them they can or can't do?
So that's a definition about electronic communication. So it's, it's including a Facebook message or an Instagram message. It's essentially saying communication through a social media channel. And that's one of the definitions of electronic communication.
Okay, and then you go on and say what's appropriate and then, or definitely what's not appropriate.
Exactly.
Okay.
Do you have any, any other sections Diane that you had questioned?
Nope, I was just trying to make sure that I kind of understood it. I mean, it seems like it's fine, but with policy, I'm always a little apprehensive. I guess thinking more of the students than I am of the employees and how much monitoring goes on. So I guess that was my concern and I don't know if I need to be concerned or if that was just my concern. Do you know what I mean?
At the bottom of the report, it does talk about where you have access to go if there is something going on that you think may be inappropriate or not, you know, being handled correctly. So I, I found the thing, you know, pretty nuts and bolts, not that I'm a lawyer or anything, but it seemed very straightforward and direct and dealt with things clearly. I, you know, all the stuff about student misbehavior, it seems to me like that would be a very nuts, you know, if you, I don't know how you, what, what the, what the repercussions might be of being inappropriate on the.
Right, so you can see Michael in, just above the enforcement responsibilities under Roman numeral three B, there's a procedure. So once you've approved and adopted this policy and it is mandatory, then I develop a procedure that provides guidance around how we're going to enforce this, what our, what our protocol will be.
So that would be another policy that we would get?
No, it's a, it's a procedure that accompanies this policy.
Okay, developed procedures. Okay, I see that.
I have a question about, so it's between those employees and students, but what about parents of students? Is that at all in there or?
This is not covering parent to student.
Okay. If we act as sort of like a liaison or, you know, like I would email a teacher on behalf of my son, is that a completely different?
There, there was, there was one spot in the report where they talk about it would not, certain laws wouldn't extend to members of the same family.
Okay.
Do you remember that Randy where that?
I did, yeah, I did read that too. So it's under applicability, which is Roman numeral four C. It says an employee is not subject to these provisions to the extent the employee has a family relationship with a student, but that's different than what Cory is referring to. So this particular policy is not addressing inappropriate electronic communication between parents and students or parents and employees.
Okay, and, and the reason I asked, because it just stood out to me, there is one question. Definition of inappropriate was email between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And I thought was, I didn't quite, I mean, because like sometimes if you email, it doesn't mean that you're, you're contacting somebody, but it's not like they have to be responsive right then, but you might just email something as you think of it. And I just, I wasn't understanding why that was inappropriate.
I, I think my understanding of it is that students, we want to set some boundaries around students, teacher communication and, and really there's no reason a teacher should be emailing a student between, or, or, you know, electronically communicating between those hours if we can avoid it and, and vice versa.
So like if, if a teacher is up and that, is that for their work day to protect their, their work hours?
I think the intention is that we don't want teachers and students communicating in the middle of the night. I think that's what the intention is behind this policy.
Okay.
But what if that works or what if the student is working and then wants to send that at 10 o'clock at night? I mean, I, I think that that bothered me also. I mean, it's like 10 o'clock is inappropriate? Not really. Certainly not if the parent is doing it on behalf of a frustrated child or, you know, I can certainly see setting it, but I don't know if it needs to be in a policy, but I just think 10 o'clock's like.
I mean, I think. We have to remember that we're talking about kids too. We're not talking about, you know, me coming home from work and then doing all my chores and then realizing at 10:30 that I wanted to get something out to a teacher. I, I think it's important to put that, that block up, that there's just, there's a time and a place and this isn't it.
So can I ask a clarifying question possibly? So this is only for elementary age students, not junior high and above?
No, it's K through 12.
And R is.
We have a problem with that.
Well, it, you know, I think, I think that the, the process is to approve the mandatory policy. If you as a board are not comfortable and you want, you know, to have Julie go back to the SBA expressing concerns about the policy, I think you, you can do that, but we're not, we don't have the kind of authority to change it, given the fact that it's a mandated state policy. So I think if you as a board are concerned about the content of it, then, then you would take that step so that you're not approving it tonight and going back with further questions to the SBA.
Wow, so it's not local, it's the state of Vermont saying 10 o'clock to 6:00 AM, that's inappropriate.
It's the state of Vermont saying that this is the policy as it's written.
My sense of the 10 o'clock to 6:00 AM, when I read through it, seemed to me like the unspoken unofficial but largely observed rule about not making phone calls after 9:00 AM in my local community. And unless it's somebody close to me, I don't do that. If it's after 9:00 at night and I have to contact someone, I wait until the next morning. So I'm, you know, unless it's an emergency, of course. And the point that you're speaking to, because if I've just finished a report or I want something that, I want my teacher to look at first thing in the morning, will I be violating the rule if I email them, you know, some assignment? And I don't know that the language specifically deals with that. Communications is a very broad, you know, bucket.
It's also possible, as I write up the administrative procedure, to expand on that further, to provide some flexibility within the procedure itself.
Okay, I mean, for me, yeah, I, I think email is sort of inobtrusive in a way. So if somebody is up, if that hour works for them, it seems to me kind of an odd thing to, to regulate. Maybe saying something along the lines of responses are not needed between these hours so that a student wouldn't be emailing a teacher about an assignment maybe being late or whatever, that wouldn't be, that, that time wouldn't be live for their education, but it would be something that they could do when they, when it works for them. I don't know if that makes sense, but. So you were saying something along the lines of protecting those hours for people that shouldn't be up at that time, but if, if, I don't know, if they, if they are, it seems kind of strange.
I just think that's, that what you said was it, you know, if you're trying to say they shouldn't be up at 10 o'clock at night, I, I think that's inappropriate for somebody to say to a parent's child. So I don't know.
I don't think there's anything in this that is saying that you can't be up at 10, but you can't be communicating with your teacher at 10. And I think that's perfectly reasonable and I get, I, I get that a lot of people don't, but I do. There's a reasonable expectation for a teacher to have some privacy from, from their students. And there's, in this day and age where a text message and an email and a social media message and all of that can be sent in the blink of an eye, it blurs the line. And I think having a line sort of more firmly drawn actually makes some sense to, to give kids a perspective that they're not, they're not relevant to everybody's life 24/7.
That's what I mean.
I agree with Julie on that point and I think that there is, as, as was suggested, there's room here for us to possibly tweak that language from what Randy was suggesting if we want to, or if we are able to. But my sense is that these, the boundaries that are being suggested here are not out of line. I run a business, you know, I get emails sometimes from clients at 11:30 at night, but I certainly don't respond to them until the next working day. And it feels a little bit like a violation of, you know, of a kind of business hours, school hours are between thus and thus. So I would agree with you on that. And I think personally, I would vote to pass this thing. And if we, again, if there's the option of tweaking it to some degree, then that might make it even better, but I don't see anything even wrong with it as it stands personally.
I would, I mean, the language of, along the lines of having to respond or not being bound to respond, but I just feel, I just, I'm a night owl and I email one in the middle of the night because that's when I'm up and I don't expect somebody to get it right then and respond. So if that's the, the intent behind it, that would, I think that clarification would help, I guess.
I, I also think that this is relating to a lot of different forms of communication. You're specifically discussing work-related email for a student assignment and teacher in assignment, which is an easy mode of communication to pull out in a procedure. But the idea of protecting children, staff from iMessage or texts or FaceTiming between the hours of 10 and 6 might have a pretty, pretty good support behind that.
I think teaching a little bit of personal responsibility too, to people is kind of helpful, to be honest. I, I think that's where I'm coming from. If you've forgotten something and it's 10:30, you should have thought of that at 9:00 and you can wait until 6:00. I, I think it's reasonable. I real, I think it's imminently reasonable and I don't, I don't think we make things reasonable enough in, in electronic communications. I do have one question Randy, I'm sure that it will just be spelled out in procedures, but I assume that will be a procedure about how students are educated and informed about this policy?
Yes, not just students, but adults as well.
Right, right. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I guess I'll chime in. You know, I, just listening, I can see arguments on both sides, but just, yeah, I really do think that having boundaries set is important. I mean, you know, you're, you think, oh, I'm one parent, I'll send this email and they'll get back to me in the morning, but you know, that teacher may, at 6:00 in the morning or 8:00 in the morning, open that up and have, you know, 10 or 15 emails from different parents and students all bombarding them. And it's just, yeah, I think to have some boundaries, that if you have questions during hours, you reach out to the teacher. I think this, this is going to be really challenging for everyone, but this is really challenging for the teachers, having to take this on and teaching remotely. And, and I think that we need to try to really think of them and what they're dealing with and trying to, trying to accomplish this. So I think having those boundaries is important because as you say, you know, you could do emails, but then there's texts, there's phone calls, it's just, I think, just keep it simple. Those are the hours and, and I, I think that's a good, I think that's a good boundary to have, so.
Just as another point of information, our, our email system allows you to delay sending until 8:00 in the morning. So you can write it at 2:00 in the morning, but delay the send until 8:00 in the morning. First, students and staff have the ability to do that.
That's really an excellent.
Then they would literally all come at 8:00, all of the overnight messages.
Anyone else?
Can I make a motion that we approve this?
We have a motion.
Motion.
So.
Sorry, that's right.
So no one has any more questions or comments? I'll do a roll call vote, Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
Diane?
Yep.
Scott?
Yep.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay.
All right, so the second agenda item I have is recommending that you approve the delegation of authority during the state of emergency due to COVID-19 pandemic policy. So a little bit of background on this is that on July 23rd, the Secretary of Education issued a, a document that included guidance, which was then updated on August 4th. And this guidance stated, "School districts will have the authority to decide which instructional dispositions will be implemented in their schools. School districts should describe their instructional dispositions through policy or administrative procedure." So given that, there's a couple of options for how the, how a district might proceed and what I'm recommending is that you provide the superintendent with the authority to make the kind of instructional disposition decisions. And so the, the policy is presented for your review.
Okay, can I get a motion on this?
So moved that we approve the delegation of authorities to action.
Okay, thank you Michael.
I will second.
Thank you Cory. Discussion?
So I'm sorry, I, Randy, can you just walk through again how this would kind of, how this plays out on the streets, so to speak?
I guess in the, in the simplest form, you delegate the authority to determine how we're going to operate our schools during this pandemic to me, to find, to make that decision. So you've received, I've shared with you, communication of the work that we've been doing. We've had a whole lot of people involved in that decision. So, so with the, with this decision, you allow us to continue operating the way that we have been operating.
And just, I think maybe it would help everyone with a little bit of clarity if we could tell them what their alternative to that was, what the AOE had, the AOE had issued us to make one of two choices.
Sure. So, so the second one, the second option is for the board to like develop and adopt policies that guide my work. So, so you would develop policies that then I followed and, and then I develop procedures about what it is. So it would sort of stop the work that I've been doing right now. You would engage in a policy development process and then that would be how, what I would use to make decisions and I would not have the authority to make any decisions related to your students without your approval before I made the decision.
So in other words, if Randy found out that there was a student in a classroom with 10 other students on Saturday night, that he found out that there was a potential outbreak, we would be meeting the next day. Because we would have to have, because that was now our authority to close the school or not close.
It seems, it seems like an obvious choice in this case. And, you know, it, I don't see what we could potentially add except more of a burden and, and a complication personally. And let's remember that this policy goes into effect if there's a state of emergency and the minute there isn't one, there's, this policy ends, correct?
That's exactly right. It, it ends as soon as we're out of the state of emergency.
My dog. Come here buddy. Here you go, sit down, sit down. He's a thunderstorm, so he's up with me.
I don't know, ask him. Okay, so we're all back, right? I mean, any other discussion on this or questions? I'm not seeing anyone. Is everyone okay?
Yes. Good.
I have a motion on the floor. I'm going to do a roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Diane?
Yep.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Just an FYI, I'm just going in the order that you are on my screen. Please don't take.
You just burst my I'm special bubble.
I was trying to figure out.
The bubble's been obliterated. All right, let's move on.
Okay, so my, my last agenda item is the monthly update, which I provided for you. So the focus of this update was on our school reopening plans at the SU level. You've seen communication, so a lot of this is summarizing information you've already seen, as well as exploring and sharing information that I considered would be relevant information that I thought board members might be interested in. And, and then I also talked about our equity work. So you all have read this, you all have opportunity, I'm not going to go through it and read it for you, but I am happy to answer any questions you might have. I will say that this week, Brooke is starting their phase three work, so she is just starting that work now. So questions that you have related to Metawi specifically, we don't have for you, but I know that Brooke intends on keeping you updated as things are pulled together for Metawi specifically. So I'm happy to answer any questions or engage in conversation with you about any of this work.
So if I want, if we had questions about what was happening in Metawi, you wouldn't necessarily be able to answer that.
That's correct. We don't, we don't, they're just starting their work right now. So yes, you don't have Metawi specific information right now.
So that, like that would be like transportation and, I mean, because there's a section here on transportation.
That's correct. So met, so forums were just sent out requesting phase one participation. Those are due back at schools either today or tomorrow, as well as those recommending distance learning. Principals will be going through all of those details and then transportation will begin being able to look at that information next week. But we have a number of, a number of factors to consider as far as kind of runs and students that we don't, don't have the details yet for.
I assume Randy that there's an immense amount of flexibility in this. I think specifically I'm asking, so it's the one, two, fifth paragraph down where we're talking about communicating assignments.
Sorry, communicating what?
Assignments and work, you know, what's expected of kids. I was just thinking, I think there's a lot of, a lot of parents working odd hours because of this. And so I was wondering how much flexibility this, like I, I think it might be hard for people to have assignments on Monday that are due on Friday with no weekend time to get them. That's.
So, right, so I, I would say to you that the, that there's greater flexibility than we likely ever had within our system this year. If I were to even kind of scale that down lower, I, I've had a couple of conversations with parents regarding their work schedule and completion of assignments. And, you know, thinking just at the end of last week, I had a conversation with a parent and she said, I work till 3:30 and I'm a single parent and is it okay if, you know, if I can get my children to their assigned times, can we do our work after, you know, between 4:00 and 7:30 at night? Sure, you know, absolutely. We are, we're not going to provide kind of arbitrary barriers. I think if people, if, if a teacher and a, and a parent are discussing specific circumstances around work completion and there's communication and decision-making together, that will be completely allowable. The concern is that if it's Monday to Friday and there's no communication, then we need to, we've got to have a level of accountability this year that we did not have in the spring. We're required to follow attendance policy and procedure and we need to make sure that our students are engaged in the work and learning. So it will be, definitely be tighter, but there will be as much flexibility as we can, as we can provide.
Okay.
The recommendation, just, this is a follow-up, we, we did, conducted a survey at the end of last school year and, oh, so, so many parents communicated that they really needed all the information to come at one. all the information to come at one time, so that they kind of had a sense of what was coming. That the constant emails and communication and assignments coming in and out from one or multiple children was very difficult on parents. So this is a direct response to the feedback we'd had from families to help make the entire experience more manageable.
Yeah.
I definitely know, another thing, being on the instructional team for Phase 2, we talked about the importance of having some standards for all teachers to have the assignments going out on Monday and receiving them on Friday. A lot of parents I talked to as well, when it was different across the board with different grade levels and different teachers, it was hard for them to stay organized. So that kind of came out of the parent feedback.
Do you have an idea of how attendance will be measured then for the distance learning? Is that, or is that still?
Yeah, we're, we're going to be developing a pretty clear protocol for it, but essentially, we're going to be expecting students to be logging into their learning management system every single day. We're going to also be expecting them to attend their two, at least their one class synchronous time and checking in potentially during office hours as well every day, but accessing their learning management system and participating in some way is going to be one of the key pieces in which we monitor attendance.
Do you think, Randy, under your general comments, concerns? One, I mean, maybe you don't have a handle on this right now, but are we, are we not going to be able to, do you think there's a possibility that we're just not going to have the staff to bring everybody back?
Can't answer that yet. It's, it's probably an area that right now I spend the most time on. I'm in connection with our Human Resources Director daily on this topic. We've got a spreadsheet and I look at it every day. And I, I provided information at the end of last week to all of our staff about leave benefits. So they had a good understanding of the new leave as well as the avail, what's been in place before. And so we have a few issues that we're looking at right now pretty actively. I'm, I've got in contact with the Teachers Association and trying to think creatively about, with them. I'm looking forward to some conversations this week and likely next week as well. I'm also, I also mentioned in here childcare is a concern for a lot of teachers and families. It's definitely a community need and I've got a stakeholder meeting on Thursday afternoon to really try to get some creative problem solving in with, with a, with a group of people who have the ability to make some, some different decisions this year than we typically do around childcare. So those are, you know, health concerns of employees or family members and childcare tend to be the biggest concerns for employees. I'll have a better sense, I think, probably by the end of this week or certainly by the middle of next week about where things stand.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, I.
Right, the last thing I want to be doing is scheduling special meetings to say that we don't have the staff to open our schools.
Yeah.
And I do, you know, I mentioned in here, I've been, I have spent, I, I attend many, 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 many meetings a week. And part of what I'm going to say to teachers, I'm meeting with all, all of our, our employees on Wednesday. If anybody's watching this, you're going to hear the same analogy twice, so you might want to step away so it doesn't ruin it for you on Wednesday if anyone's watching. So all you YouTube Live employees, step away for a minute so you don't ruin the, the surprise on Wednesday, it's not really a surprise, but you know, I am the one person in our system that sits at the hub of every single meeting and every single decision. So, you know, when I'm meeting with Greg and Derek about facilities and transportation or Mandy and Peggy with a pediatrician and a nurse, and when I'm meeting with principals or I'm meeting with Paul, our Special Ed Director, or with Skylar, our Director of Teaching and Learning, I am the hub, right? All of them are spokes, if you think about this like a wheel. Nobody has the information I do. I, every time I have a meeting, I walk away feeling more confident in our plan and what we are, what we are developing and what's in place. Nobody else gets to experience that except for me because of the nature of the work that we're doing. But I think it's important, and I think it's important to say to you and tomorrow night when I meet with Taconic and Green, to say to them that I, if, if I, if we were not on the path we are, making the decisions and the input that was coming to me wasn't as solid as it is, I would be honest with you and say, I have to tell you, I'm not feeling great about this. But that's, that's not the case. I stand by our decision for a slow start to school. I think that that is the best way to approach this for students and staff, families. We want to get things up and running well. I, and, and when, when I look at what we're doing, it's like, this is the right stuff. When I look at what's happening around the country right now, I think to myself, I am incredibly glad that I am not a superintendent in Florida right now. And when I look at students coming in and not needing to wear facial coverings and crowding and not, not being what I would, I would consider responsible, I, I, it makes me feel that much better about the work that we're doing. So we've got great health and safety guidance and, and I just feel like I want to say to you, when I finally made, you know, got to the point of saying, we're going to do a slow start, we're going to do a phased-in approach, we're going to get our feet wet and we're going to get us, give us a chance to get things right, I finally started to sleep a little bit. And that's continued. I, I have not for a second, second guessed that decision as being the right one for us.
Thank you for saying that, and I really endorse your, your approach and appreciate your attitude about this. And the caution seems absolutely appropriate and gives you ways of adjusting the flow, so to speak. So, carry on, as far as I'm concerned. May there be as little to do as possible, which seems highly unlikely.
Yeah, agreed and well said.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Diane, how are you feeling?
I'm fine, thank you.
You look very cozy.
I'm a little warm. My pants off, so let's keep moving here.
Okay.
If I was in a chair like that, I'd be asleep right now.
I would be.
You know, Randy, just, Randy, for what you were saying, I think to err on the side of caution is the way to go, you know, and I think that Vermont as a whole and as a state is a perfect representative of that. I mean, we have the lowest infection rate in the country and our governor, I think, has done a fabulous job. He's been, you know, perhaps in some people's opinion, erring on the side of caution, but look where it's landed us. So, yeah, as Mike said, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so the last piece I have, I, I forgot about the audit. So you have an audit, it's only for distribution. It, it's, it's very solid, you should feel good about the audit. If you have any specific questions, Sue Wilborn's happy to answer them, but it's pretty clean and, you know, there's no, there's no, it's not a discussion item, it's just for your records. Okay?
I want to say we've been amazing accounting, people at the BRC, they're going to keep us in order in mind, which is very helpful.
Well, Sue's the best. Okay, so, board updates. Anyone have an update? I don't have anything to update you on. Okay. The next meeting date is, the next meeting is our Board Retreat, which is on August 19th, which is a Wednesday from 1 to 4, it's virtual.
What day was it?
It's Wednesday, the 19th.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Will we have packet kind of worksheet type of things for that? Okay.
Yeah, so Julie and I had a brief conversation about this and sort of, we'll do more work on it, but tentatively, the, the topics that we want to talk about were board reflection of this year, goal setting, reviewing your previous goals and talking about your goals moving forward, having a discussion about policy governance and the possible transition to that and giving you time and space to just discuss that. And then to take the time, as probably as part of that conversation, to review current policies with policy governance policies and kind of have a sense of making that decision through the lens of what does this actually mean and how does it change? As well as all of the training you've had and your, you know, personal thoughts and experiences. So right now, those are the areas that we have. And I will pull together, you know, protocol and, and procedure for all of you around the meeting.
Can I add to that? I forgot, I wrote myself a note. We were supposed to be talking about our next steps on equity. And the SBA has that new policy out, I thought we could maybe address that as well.
Sure. And I can talk more about the work that we're doing also at the SU.
Okay, I want to let you know that I attended the VPA conference last week and it was all on equity. It was amazing keynote speakers and I have a lot of information to share.
Medowee's doing some pretty fantastic work around equity. And I think you'll be pleased to hear the work that they're taking on, so kudos to them. And I also just want to make, I know I'm not, I'm not a board, oh, well, it's a board retreat, I'm probably going, let's see, this is what happens once your first meeting with your new board. You go a little rogue for a moment, but I feel that it is important to just publicly say that Brooke's done a tremendous amount of work in, in the planning work in Phase 2 and she's really taking, taking all this work very seriously and doing a great job to lead Medowee so far. So I have all the confidence in the world in her ability to put together a school plan that is a great one for the, you know, Paulette Rupert communities.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a quick, I don't know, this is, this is board updates, I'm hoping this is an appropriate time. And I have, I have really a question. And I know that it, this event occurred recently and it, you know, kind of put me face to face with our policy governing principles, but a neighbor of mine who has a relative who is working at the Medowee School in a janitorial capacity approached me about the fact that there were teachers, I guess, who have been receiving a sort of a hazard stipend. And she was wondering if such a thing could be extended to the folks who are responsible for cleaning or how that might be taking place. I made, because I've been doing my best to get a little more restrained about such things, I told her I really had, I would, I would ask some questions on her behalf, but I didn't think that it was necessarily even something that the board would have any influence or effect on. And I, I raised this because I didn't exactly know how to handle it, if at all, but I do want to follow up with her so she feels like I'm at least, you know, being duly diligent, so. And this may be the wrong place to drop this little bomb, but, and I had meant to contact you, Julie, frankly, earlier and life happened in the meantime.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have anything called Hazard Pay, so she has some information that's not quite accurate. There's, there's nothing like that happening. So it makes sense probably for you to maybe ask that person to connect with Brooke if they have questions and just kind of put her right in touch, him or her, right in touch with Brooke so that they can ask her directly what the question is and she can explain to them and clarify. But we don't offer something like that, so there's some level of confusion.
Okay, thank you. I will pass that on. You are obviously, you know, I will, I just want to make sure that my, that our collective constituents, if they approach me about something like that, get a follow-up. And that's perfect. Okay, thank you.
Do you have something, Diane?
Um, I just, I, and again, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or if our retreat, but I would love for Brooke or whomever it has to be at Medowee to help us to know there's help out there for families who need food. And we're doing Rupert, Aunt Paulette, and so I just want to put that back out there again. Because the fall's coming and, you know, you might see the need and so we want to be able to help those that we can.
So Diane, just for clarifications, is it through the Paulette Church that you're talking about, the dirt, those dinners?
Um, yes, we've got other ways to help also, but yes, that is one of the things that I'm speaking about, yes. We can individualize as much as we possibly can depending on, but yeah. Just knowing who they are, what they need.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, after the retreat, we have a September 14th meeting, which is Monday, it's another Zoom meeting. Presumed to be Zoom and less determined otherwise, but I'm anticipating that we'll just be Zooming all along, all the way through 2020. So then, and then the last thing we have was the board self-evaluation, which, if everyone's ready, you can pull that up. It, it didn't get in our pack. Yeah, but, so it's me, so that I could just, I can just go through this. So the first question then would be, what is the level of engagement of all board members?
All that were present, I think we did well.
Okay. So high or low? You would say high?
I would say.
I agree. It's up to you, Scott, you yawned a lot.
All right. Just doing my best.
He's not in a recline.
Can't see my toothpicks that are holding my eyes open, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Guilty as charged.
The agenda, was the agenda followed? A yes or no? I would say yes.
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 Was it linked to our annual work plan? Oh, we missed our work plan in the agenda too.
That's incorrect. We'll get it the next time.
We'll get it, we'll be, we'll get there. I do think we, I think we touched on several important things that we wanted to be a part of our, our annual work plan and we have an opportunity at the retreat to really hone in on that, so I think that we're, we did a good job on that. Uh, number four, was there sufficient time spent on community engagement? You know, Randy, that's actually something I didn't really, we didn't really talk about, but, um.
It's a policy governance.
Yeah, and so. I think, I would like to point out that I do, I think you've been doing a good job over the summer of communicating with families. And I think that people appreciate that and it's certainly, it's more of a you thing than an us thing, but hopefully we can, we can continue in that vein. It's appreciated. Ends discussion. We're, we're getting there and executive limitations, we're, we're getting there. Number five is irrelevant. What went well?
I, I think in general, there is, and I genuinely appreciate the other members of this board and I feel like people have stepped up in many cases to do all kinds of activities, frankly, that I personally just could not possibly get to. And I know that everybody else's schedule is probably equally as busy as mine. So I just want to extend a kind of a thank you to my fellow board members and I feel like collectively, we are doing a credible and focused and following-through kind of job. And it has also been, as a friend through my shop pointed out today, you know, we're living in a, in a really, a time where the whole, how did he put it, like the, the stress quotient, the, the bar of stress has just gone in, in huge ways up. So the fact that we are, you know, functional and civil and, and curious and motivated and living in a place where we live that seems to be reasonably approaching this thing, makes me feel really grateful. So, thank you all sincerely.
Thank you. I, I do, I want to thank everyone too, because I feel like we've made a little bit of a switch. I find it important to, just procedurally, to follow the motion second. Um, I find it important to, um, just procedurally to follow the motion second then discussion thing. And that's a little bit of a shift, um, and I think everyone has handled that very well and politely, and I appreciate it.
I, I, it really does help me too, actually, so I'm glad that we're doing that too.
Good. Um, do you have, anyone have any concerns with tonight's meeting? Anything that happened?
No.
Okay, good.
I have a simple question. On that little, um, exchange that Michael shared with us about the person asking about the hazard pay. And, and, you know, Randy, you were saying that, that person should call Brooke. And I was a little confused by that. In a case like that, wouldn't you have them call, you know, like you or superintendent? Because I mean, isn't that more of a, uh, it seems, I mean, Brooke's not responsible for who gets hazard pay, that's really decided at the BRSU, right?
We don't have anything called hazard pay, so. So typically, I, I said Brooke because we want employees or when there's a question about a stipend or any type of additional work, for employees to have those conversations with their building administrator before it comes to me. So I, in my mind, considered something around payment for, I don't, I'm not, to tell you the truth, even sure what hazard pay actually is. But from my perspective, it was, hey, somebody's getting something and I'm wondering if, if you can help me understand, you know, how I might get that or if I apply, because it's something that would be, I would think more at a building level. And then if Brooke said, look, hey, I don't really know about that and looked into it, she would know pretty quickly whether or not that's something that should go to the business office or to human resources. But, but the, the building administrator would be the gatekeeper.
Okay.
So I think, um, maybe we can talk about this at the retreat, but I think that I, it's important for us as board members to, um, to, to understand and effectively communicate to people that communicate to us the, the procedures up for complaints of, or questions of any variety, which is kind of like, if you think about the steps of a ladder, like you start at the bottom, you don't all, just automatically go to the top. So for parents that have concerns, they're supposed to go to the teacher, their child's teacher, and if they don't find satisfaction there, then they would go to the building admin. And then if they don't find satisfaction there, then they would go to the superintendent. So it's important, um, for us to be able to understand and communicate that to people. We're often going to be the very last place that they land and we certainly shouldn't be the first. And then the last question on this is, um, how could this meeting be improved?
It can come with coffee and Danish. And a little face-to-face contact from, you know, all of us isolated people living in Hudson Caves out here in Rupert.
Your train has beautiful lighting.
Yeah. I think it would be hugely improved if we were meeting in person and Julie was bringing lemon bars.
That would definitely be a step up.
Someday, folks, someday.
Okay, I, I am feeling like this whole Zoom mechanism, and I guess it's just my own, uh, I'm getting more familiar with it through other, um, folks in my life as well. So that whole thing has taken, because like at the last meeting when Arlene was here, I just felt like I was sweating bullets to figure out and sort of stay connected. But that does seem to be getting ironed out a little bit, at least in, uh, in our neck of the woods.
Good. That's good. Okay, is everyone, everyone all set with this evaluation? Okay, um, so then we move on to public comment. Um, Celeste has let me know that there's no public comment that has come through. So on that note, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:29.
I'm off to my boy.
Oh, have fun, Michael.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, thanks.
Bye.